Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, October 20th, 2021, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
Here.
Doug Hardy. Donald Bergen.
Here.
Dan McGowan.
Here.
Chad Nelson.
Here.
Susanna Ballard. Matthew Mitchell.
Here.
Sam Levin. Gabrielle Medley.
Here.
And David Diaz.
Here.
Okay, we have one vacancy here at the... Diaz, do we have an alternate here present?
Yes, we have Matthew Mitchell and Sam Levin.
Mr. Mitchell, would you please come forward and take the seat to my right? And we do not have a vacant seat on my left. That's Chad Nelson on via Zoom, I believe. Okay, correspondence and announcements.
Yes, Mr. Morris. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. The most recent city council meeting, they approved that the Spar Final Platte subdivision, that was that two-lot subdivision on the light industrial zone property on Spar Circle. That concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes of the last meeting, are there any additions, corrections, deletions to those minutes by any Commissioners? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
I make a motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Diaz and a second by Mr. McGowan to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any discussion? Is there any discussion on the item? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes.
Maria, how do you want me to cast my vote?
Right now, you may say yea or nay.
Yea.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me start by saying that this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item. There will be time for the Commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the Commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that anyone of the public that wishes to speak, limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only. Keep all comments to less than five minutes, and two, stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for the city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the Commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is ID 21-3007. It's a request for a zone change for 2200 Victoria Farms Road, assessors parcel number 120-03-024, a 10-acre meets and bounds parcel from A-P Agricultural Preservation District to LI, which is Limited Industrial District. Mr. Morris, your presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much. Here's the area map. The subject property is in the northern part of town, south of the airport. Access to the property is from Highway 95 to Chenoweth Drive, and then north on Chenoweth, onto Victoria Drive, Victoria Farms Road, and then Victoria Farms curves to the east, and it's about a third of a mile, half a mile down Victoria Farms Road. The subject property is about 10 acres. It's currently vacant. The abutting properties are a mix of undeveloped properties and open storage uses. The property lies outside the city's water service area. Epcore Utilities is a water provider for the property, and wastewater is currently not available at the property. As far as the zoning, the current zoning is AP. There's the subject property. And the property to the east is also zoned AP, as well as to the southeast. The property to the south and west are zoned industrial, and the properties to the north are zoned light industrial. They're a mix of vacant land and outdoor storage uses. Oops. The agricultural preserve, that AP zoning in the northern area town here is basically a holding zoning. That AP zoning was assigned to these properties when the... because it most closely matches, matched Mojave County's zoning for the property when the properties were annexed into the city. So when a property owner wishes to develop the property that's zoned AP, they really need to come forward with an appropriate zoning district request to rezone the property through the rezone process. So the general plans, future land use map designates this entire area as employment, which suggests that industrial uses are appropriate in that area. The applicant's citizens' meeting letter states the desire to rezone the property to light industrial to allow for a storage yard, and that use is allowed in the light industrial zoning district. Staff received no objections from any of the reviewing agencies or departments, and that concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is attending via Zoom if you have any additional questions of them. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of staff by Commissioners? Anybody at all? Is the applicant present via Zoom, I understand? Would you like to make a presentation? Are we having technical difficulty? Is there just...
It's just me. Everything that I have heard from Luke is what we were asking for is correct.
Okay, any questions of the applicant?
Applicant, can you state your name, please?
Andrew William Lunsford.
Thank you.
Questions of the applicant?
I have a question. Is this going to be...
Mr. Diaz, I'm sorry.
Is this going to be enclosed storage that you're proposing, or open storage, or what type of storage are we referring to?
Open storage, correct.
So uncovered is open storage?
That is the plan, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anybody... since this is a public hearing, I'm going to now open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all, pro or con? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for land use action 21-3007, a zone change for 2200 Victoria Farms Road, APN 120-03-024, a 10-acre meets and bounds parcel from AP, Agricultural Preservation District, to LI, Light Industrial District. And as a reminder, this item will go to the city council's November 23rd meeting with your recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of staff by Commissioners? Hearing none, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion by Commissioners. Anybody? Mr. Bergen?
I would move for approval as recommended by the staff. I think it fits into this very well, but I do have one other comment that I will make after the motion is done.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bergen. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Bergen, a second by Mr. McGowan, to approve item number 21-3007 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the item? Mr. Bergen?
Yes. One thing I want to mention, and I think I'm kind of mentioning this for Stu, that at this location, the sign was down again, and this is the fifth time that I have had a sign down in about three months. And it seems that the department ought to be looking at a better way to get these signs up. We have a lot of wind in this city, and there's all kind of rocks around there that could have been yours, but let's try to stop the signs from going down.
Maybe check them a little more often.
Thank you for that input, Commissioner. We will look at that and see if there's a way to keep those signs from blowing over a little more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any further discussion on this item? Anybody at all? Then let's call for the question.
Mr. Nelson?
Yea.
Motion passes six to one.
All right, congratulations to the applicant. Next item on today's agenda is ID 21-3014. This is a request for a major conditional use permit for 6565 Showplace, excuse me, Showplace Avenue, tract 2395, block one, lot 10, to allow manufactured home display and sales in the general commercial planned development C2-PD district. Mr. Morris, your presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much. The subject property is in the northern part of town, right across from the airport, at the intersection of Showplace Avenue and London Bridge Road. The property abuts Highway 95, the Highway 95 right-of-way, but does not offer direct access to the highway. The property lies 10 to 15 feet below and about 130 feet away from the paved portion of Highway 95. There's an existing signal light at that intersection of London Bridge Road and Highway 95. The properties to the south and north are vacant and undeveloped. The property to the west is developed as storage units. It shows vacant here, but there are storage units under development right now. The Lake Havasu City Airport lies to the east across Highway 95. The properties to the north, south, and west are all zoned C2 planned development, and the airport, of course, is across the highway and it's zoned AP. The applicant submitted a site plan and a letter of intent. The letter of intent asks to develop the property as a manufactured home display and sales facility. Here's the site plan that was submitted. Per the development code, a manufactured home sales facility falls under heavy equipment and vehicle sales, rental, and service category. It may only be allowed with a C, in the C2 zoning district with a conditional use permit, which is heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The site plan submitted with the request indicates access to the properties from Showplace Avenue with a new 25-foot driveway. It also shows a paved parking lot with seven standard parking spaces and one handicap space. The driveway and the parking design appear to meet the development code standards if they provide some additional backup, backing maneuvering room beside, behind these easternmost two parking spaces. The site plan, the landscape section of the development code requires a 10-foot wide landscape buffer along the right-of-ways, and at least 10% of the lot area is landscaped. The site plan shows four landscape areas with a mix of trees and shrubs and gravel ground cover on the open area of the lot. It appears landscaping will meet the development code if they provide additional 10-foot landscape buffer along London Bridge Road and the back of the property where it abuts Highway 95. The site plan shows six display home sites or locations ranging from 1,200 to 1,500 square feet of size for those buildings, and 1,800 square foot office building here next to the parking area. Any proposed development of the property will require appropriate permitting, including building permits and design review. Now go over a couple examples of the types of buildings there. The subject property was rezoned to a C2 PD in August of this year. That ordinance for the planned development rezone included the following development standards. One of them was providing, prohibiting the allowed uses of self-storage or mini-storage, so storage units aren't allowed on the property. The other condition was maximum height of 36 feet is allowed, and the final one was buildings facing Highway 95 shall have an architectural character that avoids large, unadorned facades and monotonous repetition, repetition of unrelated or inappropriate detail. In reviewing the submittal from the applicant, here's the different, three different types of standard kind of models that they'll have, manufactured homes, and then the bottom part is an example of their sales office. It appears this development meets the standards set out in that planned development. It's, they're not mini-storage or self-storage units. They're not exceeding 36 feet in height, so those first two conditions seem easily met. The third one is open to a little more interpretation. It's, my understanding is it's intended to discourage development of large, flat, plain, flat-walled, plain-looking buildings facing Highway 95. The model homes and sales office, as presented, do not have any large, unadorned facades or monotonous reputation of unrelated or inappropriate detail per the development, excuse me, per the planned development approval. They're also located about 10 to 15 feet below and about 130 feet from the Highway 95 roadway. The subject model home and office appear to comply with standard three of that planned development approval. Staff did have no objections from any of the reviewing parties for this. There were a number of comments that were received, and those comments are included as conditions in the suggested motion. And of course, as, since this is a conditional use permit, the Commission may add conditions as necessary, things like buffers, hours of operations, things like that, if you feel they're needed to help mitigate anything that may be impactful for that neighborhood. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions by Commissioners of staff? Anybody at all? All right. Is the applicant present? Would you like to make a presentation? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Good morning. Thank you for taking the time with us today. My name's Warren Wolf. I'm the project manager for Five Star Homes. What you're looking at here is display units that are on our lot in Stanton, California. We have three current sales lots, one in Stanton, California, one in Fillmore, California, and one in Hemet, California, and this is a good representation of how we do our models. I know in the past, people that have done manufactured housing have not had the greatest lots in the world. They didn't put skirting on them. They just basically popped the home in, slammed it together, didn't furnish them. That's not how we do business. All of our models will be completely finished on-site as a display, like they would sit in a community. They'll be furnished. They'll be completed inside, so that when people walk in, they're walking into a home that looks like what they will be moving into, not just something that they have to imagine. The office that you have a picture of right there is actually a 1972 manufactured home that we've remodeled a couple of times. So what you'll have here is actually going to be a brand-new manufactured home used as an office, so it'll look even better than what we have there, only because that's quite old. So we do a nice job. Our, our display lots are a thing of beauty.
All right, do we have any questions of the applicant? Anybody, Commissioners?
I have a question.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I've been, actually been in that building in Stanton on Beach Boulevard.
Oh, great.
And you do, you do have a very, can you keep it very nice? I've been, I've been in there, actually bought a mobile home from you guys at one point.
Oh, thank you.
But it is, it is actually done well, and you guys keep up the lot. It's a very busy thoroughfare right there, and you guys keep it up very nicely. So congratulations to you on that one.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Might be a little off-subject, but what do you anticipate your customer base is going to be here in Lake Havasu, because we don't have much zoning for manufactured home?
We're looking at a number of things. We have a project right now going on in Vista del Lago, across the lake that we're going to be developing in. We're looking at infill. I mean, we do a lot of these on private property. We have contractors set up to do just that as a, an economic alternative to stick building. People can usually get into a home faster than they can get into stick-built, because the permit process is less. There's less for the inspectors to actually inspect. It's actually done by a governing agency before it ever arrives, and we can turn them a lot faster. We can get a person in a home in six to nine months versus 18 to 24 months with stick-built. So there are some, some really good options for people there, and our, our base is pretty much anyone. I mean, these are affordable. They're affordable housing. We do a lot of work with seniors. We do a lot of work with young families.
But you do understand that most of Lake Havasu is zoned not for manufactured homes?
We do.
Okay.
We do.
That's where I was...
We'll work with you on that.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, did you have a question?
My question was similar to yours, is, you know, where, where are these houses going to go? You know, I'd hate to see the applicant put up such a project with the intention of building in, in Lake Havasu City and not get a single permit approved. So are these going to go out in Yucca, or are they going to go out, where are these going to go?
Most of the property right now has been out in county land.
Please, please state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Frank Arlaski.
Okay, and step up to the microphone, please.
Most of the property that we're looking at is currently in county land. Obviously, we have surrounding areas like Kingman, Blythe, where customers could actually come here and purchase a home as well, just like any other locations that we have. So we believe that the top manufacturers of these homes are backing us by putting a display, because they want a footprint here, because it's just not only the surrounding Lake Havasu area, there's other areas that are close by that can come view our display center.
Kind of a centralized sales center.
Sales center, yes.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Bergen?
The diagram you showed us with the manufactured homes and the office building, are those the only buildings that you will have there?
At this point, I would say yes. I don't think we have plans for anything other than that. You know, we may need to put up a little shed of some kind at some point to house extra paint and things for when we touch up, but nothing, I mean, we're not putting in any giant warehouses or, or storage units of any kind, no.
Okay.
I think that's what you're looking for is...
No, no storage units.
Nothing of consequence. I mean, like I say, we may put up maybe a six-foot by eight-foot shed, you know, somewhere near the office where we can store paint and cleaning supplies and things like that, but nothing, we're not putting up a garage of any kind, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the speaker?
I have a question.
Mr. McGowan?
The drawing here shows seven sites. It'll never be more than seven units on that property crowded in. You know what I'm saying? There'll be seven homes and not 10.
At this point, that is exactly what we intend, is seven homes, probably a little less, actually. What we're running into right now, what we're seeing, and it's, and this could be, this could have an impact on the industry in, in the whole, is the tiny homes. I don't know if you guys have seen or what's going on now with tiny homes. We're just starting to get into that market in California with a company called Back Porch Homes, which builds a 10-by-40-foot, one-bedroom, one-bath house. They take up a very small footprint. There's two or three different styles, so we could replace one house with three of those and not change the footprint much. So at this point, I don't want to tell you I'm never going to have more than seven buildings, because I don't want to, I don't want to lie to you. But that, if that becomes a large part of our market, then we will probably increase the number of buildings, but not the square footage of what we're displaying. Does that make sense?
So at this point, let me go to Mr. Morris. Should that footprint change, are there any additional requirements of the applicant to, to modify that, the application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the conditions of approval that staff recommendation is going to have is the site's limited to six manufactured home display units and one sales office at the locations shown on the site plan. So if they're going to make some major changes, then it would be up to staff, they're going to make some changes, and staff would review those proposed changes, and if they felt that it was a major change, it would have to come back to the Planning Commission for an amendment.
The point being is, should you decide to make some changes, you need to know that you need to come back?
That's fine.
All right, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Ms. Medley?
Going back to your comment about doing this, the tiny home scenario, those are generally on a slab, correct? So it's a more permanent-type structure than maybe these manufactured homes?
Well, no, they're meant to not be permanent. That's the thing about tiny homes. They're, they fall under the category of what's called a park model. And in California, anyway, a park model is anything under 399 square feet, and it is considered an RV. It does not have to be installed permanently. So people could put one in their backyard, let's say, move their kid in, move their grandmother in, move their mom in, and it can be hooked up to the house, permitted however you guys want to permit that, and then we can do the foundation as, as your building department wants, but they don't require a permanent slab or a permanent installation.
Okay.
Point of clarification to keep in mind, those would not qualify for a general lot here in Lake Havasu City.
Right.
There's only a couple of places in town that they can utilize that particular application, and they're aware of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I could just throw in, our lot in Stanton, which was our original lot, our sales area was from Santa Barbara to San Diego. So when we're talking about coming in, we're looking for a location for a great place to sell homes, not necessarily just in your city. We're going to cover a big footprint, we're hoping so.
Thank you, we get that. Any other questions of the applicant?
Jim, I have, I have another question.
Mr. Nelson?
Of the applicant and, and of Luke Morris. You know, with these, with what the footprint is, and it sounds like you have full intention of bringing in one or two of these park models. Isn't, don't you guys think this is something that we should deal with now instead of going back through planning and zoning again?
We don't know that we are going to be bringing them here yet. We honestly don't. It's, our, our market is not there yet.
I would suggest that we probably cover that at the time and not try and speculate.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to see if they were intending on, on doing it now, you know, and, but that answers my question. Thank you.
All right. One last time, any other questions of the applicant? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and I will now open it up to the public. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, pro or con, please come forward. Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of item number 21-3014 for a major conditional use permit for 6565 Showplace Avenue, tract 2395, block one, lot 10, to allow manufactured home display and sales in the general commercial planned development C2-PD district, as shown on the attached site plan, with the following conditions. One, the site is limited to six manufactured home display units and one sales office at the location shown on the site plan. Two, design review is required for compliance with all applicable development code requirements, including landscaping and parking. Three, building plans and permits will be required for all the units prior to installation of any buildings. Additionally, an ADA accessible route in restroom will be required at the sales office. Four, fire permits are required for review. Five, a city business license is required prior to business opening. Six, submit a drainage report to ADOT for review. Seven, submit an application and plans for an off-site improvements permit for the installation of a commercial driveway. And finally, eight, submit plans to address stormwater requirements per Mojave County Drainage Design Manual and Stormwater Ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, we are now at the table for discussion and/or a motion by Commissioners. Anybody?
Hey, Jim, I've got a few questions for Luke.
Mr. Nelson?
Okay, first question is, these, these structures will have a, they'll have to have a certificate of occupancy prior to opening. Is that correct?
Well, that's a good question. I'm not an expert on that matter, but my understanding, of course, the office will have to have a C of O. I don't believe anyone's going to occupy the sales models. I mean, if they're required per the building code, they will, they will have to have it.
Typically, that's governed...
They will have to meet the requirements per the building and fire codes.
Typically, those permits are governed by the state for manufactured homes.
Okay, so what, what I'm, what I'm getting at is that, you know, a lot of times, we've had businesses come through PNC and, and to create, you know, a sales... businesses come through PNC and, and, um, to create, you know, a sales office, and the landscaping never gets done. Um, and, you know, these guys, these guys have, they have a record of, of doing a good job, but I just want to make sure that, um, before they're open for business, that, you know, the skirting does get put on, the landscaping is put in, and the, the driveway, um, and, and gravel is, is actually installed before they open. Um, we've been through this in the past, and there's actually, you know, other sites out there that are already open that, that haven't, you know, they never completed those things that they said they would do. So I would like to add some additional, you know, terms into the approval process here where, um, those landscaping requirements are, are to be completed prior to opening a sales office, and the driveway and parking area to be put in prior to, and also, um, that, you know, no, um, jacks or foundations are, are exposed, uh, prior to opening and, uh, opening a sales office.
Mr. Chairman, if I may address...
Mr. Morris, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Nelson, thank you for those comments. Um, the design review process will typically, uh, be required, that will be required, and it would review the, uh, and the, the permit for the sales office will trigger the design review, and it will look at the landscaping and parking requirements. The stat, uh, the commission certainly can make those conditions, they may make it extra clear to the applicant on what the commission's looking for, uh, but I believe that, that the landscaping and parking will be covered, um, per this current motion. Um, as far as the other condition about skirting and that sort of thing, certainly the planning commission can add additional stipulations and make it clear what they're looking for. That's not among the staff's recommendation, but it seems like a, a justifiable condition to staff. Thank you.
Does that satisfy your question, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah.
Okay, we are still at the table for discussion and/or a motion, Commissioners. Anybody? Mr. Diaz?
I motion to approve, uh, ID 213014, request for a major conditional use permit for 6565 Showplace Avenue, tract 2395, block one, lot 10, to allow manufactured home display and sales in the general commercial slash planned development C dash two slash PD district.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Diaz. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt, is that per staff's recommendation, and do you want to add any other conditions?
Per staff's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Diaz. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And we have a second by Ms. Medley. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, um, ID number 213014 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's call for the question.
Mr. Nelson? Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, congratulations, and good luck. All right, the last item on today's agenda is ID 21 dash 3016. This is a request for a text amendment to Lake Havasu City Code Title 14, Zoning Development Code, Section 14.03.02, Table 3 dash 1, permitted use table to remove self-storage, in parentheses, mini-storage, from the list of permitted uses in the general commercial C2, mixed-use general, mixed-use dash G, and commercial Southgate districts. Mr. Morris, your presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you again. Just a little background information, uh, Lake Havasu City has processed many applications for storage unit projects over the past few years. The city council, and I may add also that the planning commission has expressed concerns regarding prime commercial properties being used up adjacent to, excuse me, to accommodate storage units development. The council has also stated publicly that the north and south entrances of the community should be protected from becoming overrun with storage unit complexes. As a result, staff, uh, planning staff has reviewed the current code relative to self-storage, mini-storage, which is storage units, and where they are permitted throughout the, the community. Uh, the current permitted uses table lists self-storage or storage units as allowed in the following zoning districts: mixed-use general, commercial Southgate, C2 general commercial, light industrial, and industrial. They're all permitted uses in those zoning districts. A little background information as far as the purpose of those zoning districts, um, the mixed-use general district is intended to provide for a broad range of medium to high-density commercial uses, including retail, office, service, and resort-related facilities integrated with high-density multiple-family residential uses with densities up to 40 dwelling units per acre. Development standards facilitate pedestrian connections between residential and non-residential uses, and the principal land uses are commercial, service, and recreational activities as well as high-density residential. Uh, the second district is, which is commercial, uh, Southgate District, which is the southern portion of town, um, along, well, we'll get into zoning maps, but the, the Southgate District, uh, is the commercial component of the Southgate area and serves as the southern gateway into the city, is intended to provide for a broad range of commercial and community service uses and encourage multimodal connections internally between permitted commercial uses with the adjacent residential Southgate District. Nearly all commercial uses are permitted in this district except outdoor recreation and entertainment uses. Uh, the C2 zoning district is intended to accommodate a broader range of commercial uses than the C1, which is limited commercial. They include heavier vehicle-related sales, service, and repair facilities. The uses in this district are generally oriented toward automobile access and visibility from arterial streets. The district standards allow for adequate but controlled vehicular access and protect nearby residential areas from higher density, higher intensity land uses. The principal land use in this district is commercial. Uh, the final two zoning districts are light industrial. That district is intended to provide for a broad range of commercial, office, and light industrial uses in close proximity to each other. Development standards encourage the use of innovative and flexible designs such as campus-type settings to buffer potential impacts of each use from surrounding uses, protect adjacent residential areas, and foster efficient land use. This district allows a wide variety of commercial, office, research, and development, and clean industrial uses. And the final zoning district where they're currently allowed is the industrial district. This district is intended to provide for a wide range of heavy commercial, industrial, and manufacturing activities, including extraction and processing of raw materials and hazardous waste storage. District also accommodates those land uses having greater-than-average impacts on the environment or on the use and enjoyment of other surrounding properties. While development standards protects surrounding areas from adverse impacts of these industrial activities, this district should be applied in locations away from residential areas. Staff has initiated this proposed text amendment to allow public discussion of the topic and possibly modify the permitted uses table to eliminate self-storage or storage units from the following zoning districts: C2, which is general commercial, mixed-use and, mixed-use general, and then commercial Southgate districts. Staff is asking for the commission and the public's input. Uh, you have copies, um, and another note, as far as the public's input, you have copies of three emailed comments from the public that are supporting limiting storage units. Um, you were emailed those and they were left at your, uh, your lecterns today. Um, so we have three members of the public who are support limiting storage units. And then the zoning maps and permitted uses table are available for review. Um, I've got that information here for us to review, uh, if you like, and, uh, just looking for your input and your thoughts, and then we would send this on to the city council with your recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion amongst Commissioners. Is there anybody who would like to make a comment? Mr. Diaz, I see you reaching.
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I did get the three, um, comments from the three men, community members that, uh, mentioned that they are against, you know, like, all these extra storage, and, and if we think there's only just three, we're, we're kidding ourselves. It's a, it's a major, major topic across the city from many, many different citizens that I've spoken to and I just run into on a daily basis. So this is just a small representation of the people that are against this place turned into a storage, especially on the entrances on the south and the north side of town. So just, that's my comment.
Anybody else?
Yes, uh, somewhere back there.
Who's that?
Will you please state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, I'll go help you here in a second.
Andrew, if, if you're intending to speak, I think, uh, you may not be aware your microphone's on.
I don't think he's intending to speak. Anybody else have any comments on this issue? Mr. Morris, is it possible for you to pull up a map relatively quickly and show what zoning districts would be excluded from this...
Yes.
...proposal?
I will, I am able to do that. Um, we have a, a number of maps here that I can scroll through, um, starting with the north side of town. Uh, these are, the zoning map overall is a large document, so it's difficult to put it in your packet, so I've got a number of slides in here that represent what you received. So here's an example, uh, this is the northern part of town. So the, the zoning districts that currently allow storage units are these reds, so the C2, and then these purples, light industrial and industrial zoning districts. So here's Highway 95, London Bridge Road. Here's the mall with C2 property, and then there's some C2 planned development, uh, that some of these are forbidden to have storage units per their planned development, others are allowed to have storage units per their approved planned development. Um, and then, uh, over here on Victoria Farms Road, Chenoweth, and part of Wayland Drive is a node that is all light industrial and industrial. Uh, that area per the staff, that area allows the storage units as well as the C2 here. And then just below Chenoweth, uh, where the lowest, uh, hardware store is, those properties is zoned C2 also. So here's a map that shows the zoning. I've also overlaid it with land uses, so you can see what is developed. So at the mall property itself, you'll see that most of that is already developed out as a shopping center. There are some outlined properties here that are zone C2, uh, that are vacant at this point, uh, although there is a, uh, uh, storage unit project under development, uh, building right now across the Retail Center Boulevard from Home Depot. There's one right there, and I believe there's one in, in plans for this product, for this property here next to Home Depot. So that's the northern part of town. Uh, here's the central part of town, um, so to give you bearings, Akoma Boulevard is here, uh, Akoma West, uh, Lake Havasu Avenue going up and down, um, and then, uh, Kiowa Boulevard is here. So this is, purple again is light industrial, and then there's some C2 scattered around. Uh, there's a big one-square mile of C2 here in industrial, Countryshire Avenue. Uh, along Akoma Boulevard West, there's some C2, and then up, uh, along, uh, Kiowa and, uh, run, runabout, I believe. And then there is a small portion here that, uh, it was recently rezoned to mixed-use general. This is the property at the end of industrial, right across from, uh, Lake Havasu State Park. Uh, overlay this now with the existing development. So here's the mixed-use general across from the state park, uh, where they are allowed, and then the light industrial and the, and the C2 zoning's, uh, scattered around, uh, they have light industrial. If we go to the next, is the central, what do I call it, the south-central area of town? So McCullough Boulevard, uh, down here near the bottom of the map, Mesquite and Swanson flanking it on either side, Highway 95 and London Bridge Road. So in this example, uh, this, this development here is C2, this area, and then along the west side of London Bridge Road, there's some C2, and then up along near Camino, El Camino Drive and London Bridge Road. Um, here's what's developed, so the existing hotels, a couple of existing hotels along Lake Havasu Avenue, but there are a number of vacant lots there that are zone C2. And up along, uh, next to El Camino, uh, Drive, there are some vacant lots that are zone C2. In the area of Mesquite Avenue, uh, there's development along Mesquite, there's some vacant lots there, they're mostly small lots. There's an existing storage unit, uh, near the north side of that zoning district, uh, abutting the wash and that property in that area. So this area has a little bit of C2, uh, that's currently zoned, that allows manufact- excuse me, storage units. And then we're looking at the area of McCullough Boulevard and Jamaica, um, North McCullough, um, in the area of the Elks. Uh, so there's a C2 node there, so the Elks is developed, there's a church and, uh, the, uh, another establishment here, and then there's some, some vacant land in that area that's currently zoned C2, which does allow storage units. And then on the south side, the commercial Southgate District is confined to this area, as the name suggests, it's the south side of town. It's this darker green along, uh, Maricopa, and then there's a, some of it along, uh, Sweetwater Avenue. There are also nodes of commercial or strips of commercial in that area, they're, they're zone C2. So at this point, the Southgate Commercial and the C2 properties in that area are allowed to have storage units. Uh, most of the C2 properties along Sweetwater, uh, have already been developed as storage units. I believe there's, um, I was thinking about all of them. Um, it looks like there's some here that are already developed, uh, um, with, uh, storage units, and then in these, commercial Southgate District, I don't believe there are any that are developed as commercial, uh, storage units at this point. And then the final land use category is mixed-use general. Here's a detailed example of the mixed-use general property across from the London Bridge, uh, par- state park, uh, excuse me, Lake Havasu State Park, uh, at the end of industrial. And then there are two other nodes of mixed-use general. One's up in the foothills at the end of Cherry Tree Boulevard and Avenida de las Foot Ho- Foot, foothills. There are a couple of commercial nodes there, they're mixed-use general. And then down in Havasu Riviera, uh, there's a mixed-use general, uh, at the open, at the beginning of Marina View, on the way to the, uh, State Park Boat Launch. And then there's a mixed-use general planned development, uh, also part of that, uh, Havasu Riviera. So I hope that helps give you an overview of these different areas. We can certainly go back and dive in deeper in any specific areas you like, and, um, open any other questions. Thank you.
Very much so, thank you. So I got a question for you. So should this pass? There are some areas, let's just say, for instance, the, uh, the one in the foothills and the one in the Riviera, that are already slated for some storage aspects. Does that preclude their ability to, to do that? When was this, when will this go into effect?
Well, it, looking at the timing for, if there's a code amendment, the city, the planning commission make a recommendation that will go on to the city council on the twenty-third of November. Your recommendation will go on to the city council. At the twenty, on the November 23rd meeting, the council will mo- most likely make a decision on what to do. That will go into effect 30 days technically from when they approve that. So the, the, in, it, the code won't be officially changed until near the end of December, December 23rd or so, somewhere around there. If there are any projects that have building permits issued for storage units, they're fine, they're, um, they're entitled to do that. Uh, there's also another step that is called design review that's done by staff. If there's a design review approval for a storage unit project, uh, that design review approval is good for one year. So it depends on where they are in the process of developing. So if there's permits issued for it before December 23rd, they, they're vested. If there's a design review issued for, or approved for it, then that design review is good for one year. Uh, if they get their building permit within that one year, then of course, they're vested, but that design review is good for one year, and the building permit would, would not be, oh, issued unless they were, unless the zoning allowed that use. So the design review gives them one year, and then a building permit says they're, they're vested, they're grandfathered in, basically.
Okay, so, and this might be a question for the city attorney. Um, and I'm gonna pose a hypothetical example for the record. If, say, for instance, somebody has purchased a property with the intent of putting storage units on it because it was currently zoned to allow that... storage units on it because it was currently zoned to allow that. And say their property was divided into a couple of parcels. One parcel they've developed, the other one they have not. And if that zoning changes, or if this, this passes and the zoning allowed zoning changes, what is their recourse, if any?
Mr. Chair, I guess I'm not going to comment on to what their recourse is. I mean, if you have questions about how the city would proceed, obviously we take every-
I'm sorry, I phrased the question incorrectly.
Okay.
What, what are the ramifications of that action?
Well, I think as Luke kind of went through the different steps, depending on where they are in the process. Just because somebody has purchased property with an intent, that would be something that might be difficult to prove unless you've taken some step to actually solidify that. So I think when Luke was kind of walking through the different steps where you're at in the process, you know, if you purchased property 10 years ago and you said you had an intent to develop it in some way, but you've taken no steps whatsoever, that might be a little harder to argue. Or how, how would you prove that unless you've taken an actual step to accomplish that goal? So.
So this basically will take away that aspect or that, that capability of anybody who currently owns this, this type of property?
Potentially, yes, depending on what the actions are ultimately of the city council.
Okay.
I mean, it'll be eliminating one of the uses that's potentially available within a certain district.
Just wanted to make sure we got that clearly on the record. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Any further discussion? Mr. Mitchell?
So that could be gotten around though with a planned development, correct? They could present a planned development to the zoning commission and we can motion to approve that to allow storage units in commercial two or one of these other districts, correct?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mitchell. Yes, the planned development process does allow you to basically customize the zoning where you can allow something that would normally not be allowed in that zoning district. That's something that's been done in the past and it's something that our development code does allow through the planned development process. So you'd have to, the onus would be on that applicant to show how it's going to fit into the neighborhood and how it's not going to negatively impact it. So it would be something that could be gone through that rezone process through a planned development, same as any other rezone. Planning and zoning commission would review it, make a recommendation, go on to city council for their review and approval or action. So yes, that could be a possibility.
Thank you.
Any other discussion by commissioners?
Yeah, Jim.
Mr. Nelson?
You know, in the past, and I completely agree with, with what you're saying, you know, obviously, you know, if this changes, then if you have a C2 property and you bought it because, you know, when you retire, you want to do a storage unit complex or something like that, you're not going to be able to do it now. But, you know, in the past, we've, we've had R4, R5 properties that as, as the city's been developed, you know, R4, R5 doesn't make sense in that area and it got rezoned to C2. So I think in the future, you know, if someone has a C2 property that, that fits a storage unit, you know, like Mr. Mitchell said, they, they could bring in a PD or, or come in for a rezone to light industrial. And that's probably what would happen in the future. We just have, be faced with that challenge to rezon it at that time, you know? But that's, that's just my comments. I, I see both sides of it. It's kind of difficult because, you know, when, when people come to the commission or they're, one of their comments is, you know, this is going to affect my property value. And this is one of those things that it could, you know? But they do have the option to rezon or, or bring a planned development.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right. At this point, I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to comment on this item? I've been anxiously awaiting your comments. Mr. Still?
Yeah, this is Luke Steele and thank you, Commissioners Chairman. What the city's trying to accomplish here is a good thing, I think. And it starts with trying to protect highly visible areas on the highway on the north and the south side. I think being able to go through a planned development for those things is an appropriate thing so that we have more say in it. I think that's a good thing. The counter argument to this is that there's a lot of demand for storage right now and it's, it's one of the only things that's been feasibly developed in this town over the last 10 years. You don't see office buildings except for one that have been developed on spec. You don't see a lot of development of land. And I, I think it is important that we remain organic and, and try and remain capitalistic in the fact that people won't build things in areas where they don't make sense. We do need to prohibit some things. Again, I agree with, with what we're trying to accomplish here, but I want to speak specifically about the mixed use general because it feels like that's a desert land group. Like every one of those is a desert land group, piece of land. Every one of them has been put into mixed use general to build storage. We just got done rezoning one specifically to build storage. And I'll say that there's a phase two up in the foothills that's going to build storage on that one piece. The other two are not going to be developed with storage. I believe they'll be developed with town homes, which is part of the mixed use general plan. The 12 acres down on London Bridge Road and, and that specifically is going to have higher density residential around the perimeter. We have one site that we're trying to customize for a gas station, C store. One site that's going to be a restaurant and in the middle of that, protected by all that on the perimeter, is going to be some more standard type of storage. Right across the street from the biggest boat launch in, in the area, it seems very appropriate there. So I'm not sure why mixed use general is getting thrown into this prohibition. Every one of our pieces that we have and everything that Luke has shown has been rezoned recently specifically to do storage. The stuff in Riviera is in the very back of Riviera. It's not going to bother the neighborhood and frankly, that's a specific plan. We're, we're putting it there to support some of the neighborhood stuff because it's in the back. It doesn't have views and there's a lot of sites out there that don't have enough room to do the larger RV garages on them. So I would just ask that the, the commission think about that with their recommendation to council because that's going to literally cost us not just the fees that we went through, but it's going to cost us planned development fee again. The time on that when we have money built up and we've already gone through engineering and we've already gone through all these other motions is pretty significant. And, and holding a project for another few months because we want to do this, it to me doesn't seem appropriate for these specific pieces of land. The C2 prohibition, the, the Southgate prohibition, prohibition, that, that covers a lot of different pieces of land. That, that seems reasonable to me. I, I again, agree with the intent of what the city's trying to do. But the mixed use general does, to me, seem an awfully small number of parcels and they happen to all be things that are being planned for, for storage right now. So that's my comment.
What are your thoughts on the C2? I know you talked about Southgate, but what are your thoughts on C2 as well?
I, I believe C2 needs to be prohibited because if the goal and the stated goal from a lot of these letters and the stated goal on the front end of what the city's presenting today was to protect highly visible areas, north and south entrances, and both of those happen to be C2. So I, I agree with getting it out of the C2 zoning district. I probably would recommend that there's a bigger lag period. I mean, there's some C2 parcels that have already been started. Luke pointed to the one on the corner there. I'm not sure that they are going to have a building permit in time for December. Maybe they will. But there's a lot of people that have already started civil engineering and other actions that cost a lot of money. So if it was me, I would recommend that this action be delayed for a period of time. It's appropriate to get permits if you're already on the precipice of doing so.
Those C2 that you just recommended, aren't they under a PD? And would that PD preclude this?
Not, not the one that they're looking at on the screen right now next to Home Depot. That's not in a PD. It's just a regular C2. They got it out of an old CCNR agreement that was put in place when Home Depot went out there. So there was some prohibition of it from a CCNR standpoint, but not zoning.
Okay.
And that's not my project. I'm just, I put myself in their shoes and they very well might get to the finish line by December for building permits. Luke could probably speak to that. But there are other people that have bought C2 properties that potentially could have spent tens of thousands of dollars on civil engineering and, and moving forward. And to have them stop in the middle of that process seems a little unfair to me. But again, I'm just, I, I think it's appropriate to get rid of storage in C2 and, and make it a PD process. It's just, if it's already started, two, three months, it's not enough to get all the way to a building permit.
Agreed. Anything else? Any comments or, excuse me, questions of the speaker by commissioners?
I, I wanted to ask a question or get, get Luke's comments on, on mixed use general. Are all of the, everything that you know of that's coming to fruition, is that going to be, are you guys going to put a PD together for each, each property?
No, it is a entitled use. The reason we went through the zoning process recently with all of these properties, with the exception of the one in the foothills, which was done three years ago, but there's already a first phase to that. There's already a second phase that's been designed. Like literally Chad, every single property with the exception of the two town home sites in the foothills and the site out across from the sales center in Riviera are things that have already moved forward with planning. I mean, every single mixed use property in town, we have something to do with. And every one of them is, has a plan and four of them don't include storage and I don't see them ever becoming storage. But, but the other ones are, and that's, that's why we put the zoning in place.
Okay, thank you.
And there aren't very many mixed use general parcels in town.
No, and none of them are on the, on the front, highly visible area. The most highly visible area is the one that we have on the screen now, industrial and London Bridge. But it's surrounded by literally industrial uses. It's as a-
Type of uses.
As a lawn tramp across the street. You know, we're, we're working with Arizona State Parks to create a commercial print there so we can provide concierge launching and, and services, you know, related to boat storage. So, and, and we are surrounding that boat storage on the perimeter with, with uses that are taller. And you will not see them from, or we're consciously doing that on our own.
Appreciate your-
Jim, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm seeing with mixed, what's going on with mixed use general right now is that most of the, there are, there are storage aspects to what most of these projects are doing, but they're like, they're fitted for the development that they're in.
And slurry.
Yeah. It's, it's a part of the overall development.
Which I would say is a success. I mean, mixed use by definition is supposed to be that. And I think everybody that, that knows desert land group, that we've come to the board multiple times. I don't think there's ever been a, a project left open ended like Chad was talking about earlier, or we execute on those things. And it would be a hardship on, on each one of these things for us if it got put on hold right now. So that, that was my comment from a personal aspect, from somebody that's been in the, the city for 20 plus years. I've served on the planning and zoning commission. I, I strongly agree with the intent of what the city's trying to do. I just think throwing mixed use general in there is unnecessary, given the limited number of sites there are.
Appreciate your comments and also agree with the, with you on the mixed use general.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
All right. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Staff findings and recommendation. Recent storage unit complexes developed on C2, MUG and Southgate Commercial properties have eliminated lots that could be used for a broad range of other commercial uses. Storage unit complexes occupy a large footprint and do not generate sales tax, lodging or restaurant and bar taxes. Allowing storage unit, storage units in the C2, mixed use general and commercial Southgate districts will continue to remove lots that may be developed for more traditional development, commercial development within these zoning districts. The light industrial and industrial zoning districts are buffered from residential neighborhood, commercial land uses and are more appropriate for storage units. Development on light industrial and industrial properties will not erode the number of lots available for typical commercial and office uses in the C2 and mixed use general and commercial Southgate districts. Zoning units are more appropriate and less impactful when developed in the light industrial and industrial zoning districts are less appropriate in the C2, mixed use general and commercial Southgate zoning districts. Therefore, based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for land use action 21-3016, a text amendment to Lake Havasu City Code Title 14, Zoning Development Code, Section 140302, Table 3-1, permitted uses table, to remove self-storage, mini-storage from the list of permitted uses in the general commercial C2, mixed use general, MUG and commercial Southgate, CSGD districts. And as a reminder, this item will go to the city council's November 23rd meeting with your recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris. We are at the table now for discussion and/or a motion. And I'll make a couple of comments at this point. I also agree that the mixed use general should be removed from this application as evidenced by Mr. Still's presentation. Most of those have already been accounted for. There's a small amount of them and they are off the beaten track. So I think there's probably a little bit of overreach on, the intent is, is good, but not necessary for the, the mixed use general. And having said that-
I would, I would agree with you, Jim. I would agree with you, Jim. And just in the fact that, you know, I think this could end up being a, a full tier approach in the future, but at this time with so many projects that are, they're developing the residential aspect, they're developing the commercial aspect and they haven't quite put it together. I don't think it's fair to, to remove all tiers at this point. I think we as a commission need to take a, maybe a, maybe steps to this. And I, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve ID 21-3016 with staff recommendations, but removing mixed use general.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Nelson. Do we have a second by any commissioner? Mr. Mitchell?
It's not a second, it's a comment. Are we, Chad?
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
Can't comment till after we have a, a motion and a second. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Nelson, a second by Mr. McGowan to approve item number 21-3016 with staff's recommendations excluding mixed use general. Okay, now we are at the table for discussion. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you. This, this motion though does not allow any additional time for people in the C2 zoning to get their paperwork together or get their building permit submitted like Luke talked about as maybe something that we should think about. Do we want to include that or put that in the motion anywhere?
Good point, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, thank you. No, I'm not. The, the, the intent here is, the focus is on C2. So basically, you know, the, the issue has been trying to protect the north and Southgate. And that's where our main C2 properties for storage complexes right now. For, that's been the, that's been the target. So the, so, so if there's not a project that's in play right now, that's in a C2 zoning, they do have time to, you know, to, to start that process right now. But that's the whole intent of this motion is to, is to protect those, those areas from storage complexes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I do have one quick clarification or a couple. There were some comments, thank you, that were made with respect to gilding a building permit. And that's just one aspect of what will vest somebody's rights. So Luke kind of went through a span of different actions that may occur that would vest somebody's right, whether they go through a plan review or they've received some of their approval from the city for that project for storage units, that will vest their right. So it's not just obtaining a building permit, that's the only way to vest that right. Just so everybody's clear on that, there are other steps that other projects and some of them that have been mentioned today have already received, they're already vested, although they have not received a building permit yet. building permit yet. And also, as to the timing, the commission definitely has the opportunity to have the discussion. I think that will be very helpful to council. By default, it'll go into effect 30 days after adoption by the city. However, if you want to give 60 days, or 90 days, or 180 days, you can certainly make that recommendation as to when you think it'd be appropriate for any type of new regulation to go into effect.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. And I can see, I can see the concern. There's, there's plenty of ways to vest their rights to go ahead and do this, but I'm afraid this might be catching some people flat-footed, but, you know--
We're trying to, we're trying to balance and address the concerns that are being expressed right now. So there's never going to be a perfect time. There's always going to be somebody who feels that they didn't have enough time or notice. And, and so we're, we're trying to balance that. We're trying to, to handle that to the best degrees we can. And as far as including the, the districts that are included, it really was for discussion purposes. It wasn't to target any, anybody specifically--
We get that.
--or, or anything like that. But it really was, the comments have been to allow it only in industrial areas, and so included the areas that weren't in industrial, just to have that discussion and get that direction.
Yeah, the, the City Council could always, if there's a lot of negative feedback, the City Council could always, you know, postpone it. But at some point, you know, the community is, is begging for this to happen.
Or the council could put that timeframe on it themselves.
Correct. And so as a, as a commission, you know, we can dutifully, you know, get the ball rolling. And it, it could take more time to actually make it happen, but, but at least we've taken one step. And, and in, in the future, you know, maybe mixed-use general could be another tier. But, you know, I think people who have C2 storage projects, you know, once this step is taken, they're certainly, you know, going to come out of the woodworks. And maybe that vote gets postponed for a while from City Council. But at least the ball is rolling.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. So we are still at the table for discussion. Any further discussion? Mr. Bergen, did you have something?
I think the department has done a wonderful job of working on this and putting it together. And I agree with it, the way Mr. Morris has presented it, that it all makes good sense to be doing this. And I cannot agree to changing what Mr. Morris has presented.
Thank you, Mr. Bergen. Any further discussion? All right, let's call for the question.
Can I add a comment? Before we do that, can we just re, make sure we know what we're voting on? Can we re, can we just redo the motion again, so I could understand what's, it's been a lot of back and forth?
Okay, let's, let's recap the motion. The motion and the second was to approve action number 21-3016 with staff's recommendations, eliminating though, and excluding mixed-use general from the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
The yes vote will be for that.
I will. I want you to wait a little. Mr. Nelson? Motion passes 6 to 1.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Next item on today's agenda is the call to the public. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to address the commission in any manner whatsoever, on any topic, now is the time to do so. We may not respond, but if there's anyone in the public that wishes to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, future meetings, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Yes, we have a meeting scheduled for November 3. We have one item for that agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. We stand adjourned.